All right, it's five ten. Madam Clerk, could you please read the row?
Bosin.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Yeah.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Childs.
Here.
Mr. Greider.
Here.
Ms. Wilder.
Here.
And Mr. Voice.
Here. Make a motion to approve the agenda. Second.
Motion has been approved with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, we have an agenda. First up on the agenda is a resolution. If somebody wants to bring that to the table.
Mr. Mayor may make a motion to approve a resolution setting date of the budget maximum levy public hearing is March third, twenty twenty-two at five thirty P M. To approve the maximum levies as required by state and instruct the city clerk to publish said notice.
Second.
The motion has been made. I'm sorry, the motion has been made with the second. Um, yeah, right now, um, for new council members, um, the maximum levy is the, uh, highest that we can actually go. Um, every year we have done it this way, and that number uh, better go down by the time we finish uh, taking a look at everything and cutting from here. But what you have before you uh, are the staff request uh, and a lot of their ask, or if you have it, or to be emailed to you. Um, Michelle, you want to give us, um, just an update on what we have or where we're at real quick?
I would be happy to do that. So we have up now the actual notice that's similar to what will be put in the paper. And this, this notice, this hearing is a relatively new one, started being required by the state legislature, I think, two budget cycles ago. So we now have to have two separate budget hearings. And so we're working on the first one. And as Mayor indicated, this sets the maximum levy but not for everything, just for certain levies. So it does not include things like debt service, for example. So this is what I would refer to more as the operating levies. And you can see up there. So the state thought it decided it would be useful, and I maybe had to be able to scroll that up, but oh, shoot. Okay, sorry. So the total collections are increasing by nine point four three percent over what we collected a year ago. The three columns on this worksheet, the one to the far left shows you our current year budget. The one in the middle shows you, and I, it's kind of strange because I don't, I don't understand why they leave the regular general the same. I might need to tinker with that a little bit. You know what I see? You can see that we changed the property value to the current property value up on the row where my cursor is now. And it should have raised the general taxes, the eight-ten levy, but it, the count, it didn't calculate that way. So it's, it, it calculates its own rate, which is different than where we're going to actually be at. It, and the decimals are goofy on here, so it should be at sixteen point thirty-five is the maximum levy rate. Instead of fifteen twenty-three. And again, that's not your total levy, that's just levies for certain areas. The explanations that are on there, a lot of that is our increased personnel costs. That's about one point three four million this year. And please remember, we're going from the FY twenty-two certified budget. There were changes made to bargaining contracts after that for twenty-two. So we're going almost two steps. We're going from what we certified for twenty-two to now what is in the agreements for twenty-three. So most of our increase, oh, and I gotta type one there, too. I did this one a little too fast today. Um, we do have increased expenses of about a million dollars, um, spread all over the city. Ambulance service fees to the state are rising. There's increases in liability insurance premiums and workers' compensation insurance has a pretty large increase. Met has asked for an increase. But we also have increased revenue. So we have increased ambulance revenue, golf revenue, franchise fees of about six hundred and twenty-two thousand. That reduces that. But in this version, I've reduced the use of fund balance to seven hundred and fifty thousand. So that reduces, or it adds store taxes, one point six nine seven million. So that, I just wanted to walk you through what you'll see in the paper. Now, it said I could alt-tab. Let's see if I really can. Yes. This, we'll go to this format. This, for those of you who have been on council before, this should be a familiar format document that goes through each activity in the general fund and shows the prior year, or the current year budgeted expense and the this year expense, and the same with the revenues and the changes in each of them. You can see if you go to row twenty-nine-ish, um, we have about a two point seven four percent increase in our public safety program. And if you go down to row forty-two in Public Works, that's an eight point four two percent increase, and that's a very small program. So the dollar increase is much smaller than public safety, but it creates a larger larger percentage. Health and social services is only human rights, so very stable there. And those of you who are printout, we're gonna go to page two, I hope. There we go. Culture and Recreation, if you go to row eighty, that entire program is an increase of five point two percent. And this increase is the change in the tax levy for each category. Community and Economic Development, there has a ten point two five percent increase. Again, a very, very small dollar amount, forty thousand dollars, but it's a large percentage. In the General Government category, on row one twenty-seven, it looks like a very large increase, forty-five percent, but that's mostly due to the change in fund balance. Again, it's a small dollar amount increase. But then you can see, I, we do have one point two million for the replacement, the rollback replacement, and then I've got the seven hundred and fifty thousand in there for the use of fund balance at this point. One thing I want to point out on this page, and for those of you who are new, we might want to go through more of these columns. Just give me a column, we can do that. If you look at row one seventy-seven, there's a number in yellow that's in parentheses. That number is indicating that we are over our eight-ten limit. And that's even with using seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of fund balance. So I, I thought it was important to point that out to all of you because we would need to find revenue to support any other things we want to add to this budget or use fund balance or reduce expenses to, to get that below the legal limit.
So, so we can't go over this levy rate? And if we do, we have to find expenses. Well, well, we have to, to get there, from what's there, we have to either raise or lower. Is that what you're saying, or?
Yes. And that, again, that does not include the debt service levy. That's kind of in a separate pot right now. So we have not set that rate yet, although this, this proposed budget shows it at the same rate uh, or same amount, roughly the same rate as it is today. Which we will have, we need to have further discussions about whether that's what we really want to do or not. So, yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Um, looking at this, uh, the, that information there on the line one seventy-seven, it's that much over the levy as far as our maximum. So realistically, you and Michelle and the staff are going to have to be looking at lowering some of the dollar amounts that are actually on this chart here, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Increasing, or increasing revenues.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we do have to make some changes, yes.
Okay.
And then I, I'm also giving you. Well, I mean, I'm gonna do this a different way, because I open a different document and it doesn't want to switch to it.
Use the whole alt-tab if you're trying to pick it up.
Do I alt?
Oh, are you trying to get another three? You already have pulled up.
Yes.
Alt-tab.
That's what I was doing, but it's only there. Okay, that's my problem, letting go too fast. I'm sorry. Yeah, see, this is the problem. We're gonna, this is not the one I wanted to go to, but this is what we're going to right now. So I'm also giving you, just because I know people often have questions about the rates and, you know, what would it take to get to a certain increase? I have just put together some sample rates with various percentage increases, and I focus primarily on residential, but they all fall in, just so that you can see what it would take to get to certain levels of tax rates. Where we are today, and again, this is just the first swipe at it, is a seven percent increase in residential. We would need to reduce our net tax asking somehow by six hundred and seventy-five thousand, if we wanted to get down to five percent. By one point one two million, if we want to get down to roughly four percent. One point five five million to get down to a three percent and two point, almost two point nine to get to a zero increase in residential. And that, that's just to give you a frame of reference of the kind of numbers we're talking about and the kind of changes we have to make. And now I'm gonna try this one more time, but I can't move my mouse fast enough. Well, that is not what we wanted to do.
No, don't.
No, we don't want to do that. I was trained on.
No.
No, just minimize it. Okay. You know what? We're not gonna go through the other document. I, this is too hard for me to do. Probably do it, but.
John, take the wheel.
Did you hear that? Somebody said you can do it, if you know how.
Look at Kelly. You say alt-tab like that, it doesn't compute.
Okay.
And you let go a tab, and then you pick what's for reading.
Okay, you didn't tell me to let go a tab. That's what I did, that's what I do.
Which one do you want?
That other. See, it's touchy. That's why I'm not used to one that's.
There we go. So.
That one. Yep. John has the magic touch. So this goes into a little more detail about the changes in expense and revenue. So you can see how we arrive at our little personnel increases. Most of it is salaries and longevity. We do have an increased request from the fire department for overtime. And there are reductions in part-time labor. We had, we did put in an amount for the police certified bonus increase, that, that was a new policy that was passed. And we increased payroll taxes to go along with increases in pay reduction in retirement payouts. Hopefully, we are going to have pure retirements. And the changes in health insurance, I, I don't have a rate change in here for health insurance at all this year. Hopefully, that will work out. And then we did have a nice year for the police and fire pension plan because that employer contribution rate fell this year for the first time in a while. So we had savings for that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'm Michelle on that. I can't read it. I mean, when, when, number one, when, when will we get these documents? Because I tried to log into my email and it's still down.
Oh, if, when email's up, I will email them to you.
Okay, so police, police certified bonus increase of thirty thousand dollars. That was part of that five thousand dollars signing bonus, if you were already certified. Is that correct?
Correct.
That was initially set up to come out of their training budget. Instead of taking twenty thousand dollars out of their training budget to send someone to the academy.
Right.
But how is this above and beyond their training budget?
At this point, they've requested an increase, so you know, that, that's something we can look at.
So Michelle, let me ask you a question. Is their training budget even enough? To like?
I don't know if any department at the city would ever say their training budget is enough. They certainly have needs and are using it, yeah.
Well, the question, the question, well, let me ask the question a different way. And, um, so if they, if they actually get certified offers, officers, that would reduce overall cost, correct? New versus, um, getting somebody from the academy or sending someone through the academy, correct?
Absolutely.
Because their training, where's your training budget?
What we save?
Sixteen thousand.
Boss, and then we get them on the street.
How much?
Well, for twenty twenty-two, it was a hundred and seventeen thousand, and I think I don't recall if they asked for more or not, but those documents are uploaded, I believe, on the finance webpage now. I, I can look at that after the meeting and let you know. I'm just looking to see. I, yeah, they, I think they do have a small increase in travel in their budget. Training, I should call it, so travel. But, um, I'll get that out to you. All that will be available to you.
So, so, Mr. Mayor, if, if that's the case, and we're sending four or five officers down at a time to the academy at an exorbitant rate to get these people certified, where, where is that money coming out of? Because we've sent more people down to the academy in the last year than their entire training budget.
So through savings in the department, Michelle?
Well, there may be. The, the difficult thing about the way the academy works is how they do their billing and when we pay. So we, I know we paid a bill right last spring for some of them that started in the spring. And there may be more bills we haven't paid yet for this year. They, they have not spent all their training budget this year. That's what I know right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. So if we're ready to go on to the next page here. There. This is a rough summary of the other expense increases that may not be every line item. It should be roughly accurate by activity, though, just to show the major changes that we made. And as I talked about, you can see there's a three hundred and nineteen thousand dollar increase in the charges to the state for the ambulance G E M T program. We're proposing increasing the workers' compensation budget by two sixty-seven, five forty-three. Other significant things on here. Another larger one is the liability insurance increase at sixty-two thousand and sixty. Met is requesting, I think it's a four percent increase this year of fifty-eight thousand five oh four. And then there's some, um, police dispatch is forty-five thousand six twenty. And that, that's pretty much.
Mr. Mayor. Sir. Uh, Michelle, do we know if the bet increases that just for, just keeping up with their costs, or are they adding new routes? Do we know if we're getting something?
As far as I know, that is only.
Just keeping up.
Yeah, because we have not even given them an increase in the last couple of years. We've held them to their prior.
Yeah.
So with, you know, people and fuel and all the things changing. I think that's all it's for, as far as I know.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Michelle.
Yes.
And Nichols.
Um, hey, Michelle, um, is that ask, um, as compared to previous years from that, um, any different than it is now?
Yeah, they've been requesting at least three percent, but we have not awarded them an increase the last couple of years. So this is maybe four percent, but it's the first time. Well, I won't say it's the first time, because they, they requested three percent in probably each of the last two years that they did not receive. So this still probably does, I don't know how to say it. We, we've held them for a long time. I don't know how much longer we can do that without.
And then, uh, listen, and, and everybody, remember, and then I'll come to, uh, Mr. Bosin. Um, right now, these are just asks from the various departments. There's a couple of things, you know, uh, the, the benefits, salary, and those types of things. Of course, we already negotiated that, so they stay, but this is just a run-through of the additional things that people ask for or decree. So just keep keeping that in mind. So Met does ask every year. And I don't, I don't know, since I've been mayor, if we did anything to increase that, but, you know, a lot of these things are still you know, we still could strike, strike the red pin through it or keep it. So still a work in progress.
Yep.
Mr. Nichols, if that's all, I go to Mr. Bosin.
Yeah, that's fine.
Mr. Bosin.
Thank you, sir. I just had a couple of questions on the, on the it must, must have been on a page that you just had up a minute ago on the G E M T, three hundred thousand dollars. Isn't that, isn't that offset by additional revenue that's coming in?
Yes, and we're gonna get to that page in a moment.
Okay, so the next, next thing is, if it says police forty thousand dollars or thirty-six thousand dollars for increase in dispatch fees, why don't we see an increase in fire dispatching? Because?
It, it, it is in there. It just isn't called out.
It's, uh, fire, fire is, uh, twenty thousand, four hundred dollars.
Right, because we pay like thirty-five thousand dollars a month for police, and we pay like seventeen thousand or something a month for fire, something like that. I don't remember, but.
You're like, it's like seventy-six thousand for police and thirty-four thousand for fire.
So, and so uh, it, I've, that's my question, because if there's, if it's gonna increase, we have to, we have to increase. But do we, do we have a, more authority now, Mayor, with, with that board over there so that they can't just add personnel and that, and just start increasing their budget and then just passing that on to us?
Right, um, yeah, we, they put in mechanisms to be able to communicate those types of things a little bit earlier from uh, our conversation the last year. So, um, yeah, we are keeping a watchful eye on that. And then I can give you an update, too, about uh, the conversation about consolidated dispatch. I know, uh, there was a study that was done, and I hadn't seen if that study was actually finished or not, but I'd be anxious to see the results about how other communities are uh, and counties are paying for this, and, uh, what would be a, a good suggestion for this city. I know we went to the eighty-twenty split uh, this past year, but you're right, I'd love to see that, see what the data says from that study.
Okay.
Are you ready to go on?
I am, thank you.
Okay. The last page just shows the revenue changes. Some of those we, we've already talked through. Um, you can see there is some fire ambulance revenue increase on here. Finance, I, I have increased the Mid-American franchise fee and gaming. Gaming has coming back very strong. You know, they were closed, completely closed for a few months in twenty twenty. Um, but they're doing well, so I'm suggesting we can increase those a bit. We do need to reduce our cable franchise fee, so that is a net in there. I took out the use of work comp reserves for work comp because we are having a very expensive year this year, and I don't think we can afford to take anymore from that fund next year. And then this is where we talked about, I took out the increase change in fund balance that we used last year. Well, that's the definition of the issue, I guess, in front of you.
Mr. Mayor.
Where do we address, Ray?
Oh, yeah.
Well, go ahead, go ahead, mister.
Hey, um, so have these additional requests, have they been factored into the previous, um, the, the numbers at the beginning that we were looking at? Or is this beyond those first numbers?
No, this is all what makes up that first number. So what I, I kind of gave you an overview of what we'll be asking you to approve at the hearing on March third. And then gave you more details of each version. And remember, this is only our first budget here. There will be another one after that where you'll be able to adopt the final budget, which will have some changes from this version, I'm sure.
We, we better.
Thank you.
Just wanted to.
So you can't.
Wonder what numbers were included in.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. Yep.
Yeah, but we can't go over. So just say, for instance, we get there on March third, we approve this number. And then we can't, we can't go over that. So we need to, uh, it's downward from there.
And the other important thing to remember is it will take a super majority of the council to approve this hearing unless we make pretty dramatic reductions like tonight or before the hearing to reduce it. Otherwise, it will take a super majority to pass this. That was another thing the legislature wanted to do a couple of years ago.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Now, Michelle, in the past, we've taken and we earmarked five hundred and twenty thousand dollars of A T revenue for property tax relief. Is, is that money there?
It is still budgeted in this budget. Um, if you remember, we.
I know, but do we have enough to pay on top of that to pay the accident bill of four hundred and ten to four hundred and twenty thousand dollars? On top of, on top of the five twenty?
Not, not today. They, it took a while to get the additional cameras up and functioning. I think, and I'm speaking off the top of my head, which is dangerous, but as of the end of December, I think they had collected just under half a million dollars in gross fees. And the budget is one point six million. So we have quite a bit of A T revenue we need to earn by the end of June to make the FY twenty-two budget work. And then we would need to collect a similar amount in twenty-three to make the FY twenty-three budget work.
So if we don't collect that, if we don't hit that nine hundred thou, we got one point five million or whatever, if we don't hit what we need for our property tax relief and to pay our accident bill, where does that money for accident come out of? What fund does that come out of to pay that?
Well, un-unfortunately, it was budgeted in the general fund, so at this time, it would likely come out of general fund, fund balance.
We theoretically could be another, just like our backfill, another three hundred thousand dollars short out of the general fund.
Possibly. I hope not, but possibly.
Okay, thank you.
So Michelle, right now, though, um, from December thirty, uh, January first to December thirtieth, how much, how much A T is, is there?
Honestly, I, I don't have that with me. I don't think on a calendar year basis with our budget, so I, I'll have to look that up and get it back to you.
Okay. That's good. That'd be good information.
All right, so questions, concerns, um, reach out to Michelle directly. Um, this is just setting the date of hearing and doing our highest number. Uh, there's a tremendous amount of work that needs to go forth over the next month, month and a half uh, to try to get, uh, you know, get it. But this is uh, additional staff request. So this has been asked for by a number of our departments. So um, any other questions this evening?
I just have one more, sir.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and this is for Michelle, and you don't have to give me this information or give the council this information tonight if you don't have it, but the, the last time we had a budget work session, I asked you about our debt service levy and the possibility of it raising taxes. And you indicated that it, it could in twenty-five and twenty-six. And what I, I, what I would like to know is what would we have to hold our C I P at this year and next year in order to minimize the impact on the taxpayers in the following years on the debt service levy? And next year, in order to minimize the impact on the taxpayers in the following years on the debt service levy? And that would give a basis of, of saying, when, when Noel and his group comes before the council with this, with the CIP levy for us to approve. Whether we should be approving that amount, or whether we should be looking towards the future and trying to minimize our tax impact, because. If our taxes are gonna go up because of the debt service levy alone, we're gonna be really hurting when it comes to trying to keep our essential services. For, for the city and, and to maintain what we have now.
Yes, I'll, I don't have that information right now, but I can get it, but we should have a discussion about that, I will work on that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Alright, well, we have a motion and a second on the floor to set the date of hearing, um, for the, uh, max levy. Uh, Madam Clerk, could you please read the row?
Mister Bowes and?
Yes.
Mister Nichols?
Yes.
Mister Amos?
Yes.
Giles?
Yes.
Mister Greider?
Yes.
Miss Wilder?
Yes.
Mister Foys?
Yes. Motion to adjourn, second.
Let's move by a second all in favor. Thank you, council, we adjourned.